All right, I'll wait for you to sit down.
I gotta say nothing anyway.
Okay. Do it to the right. Apologies to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call please.
Justin Mullinsky.
Here.
Justin Trombley.
Yeah.
Justin Trombley.
Here.
Justin Garrett.
Here.
Mary Patrick.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Soon.
Any seconds? Any corrections, discussions? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The closed motion carries. We also have a special board meeting on June 26th. We will motion for that. We want to approve those minutes in a second.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Right, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close abstain.
Yes.
Motion carries. Presentations of petitions, communications, and then a question period for members of the community. As there is no community here, they will back. I told the map that I would move his presentation up, so if you don't mind us doing that now, so he can get on the road. He did bring some information for us. Now I'll just turn it over to you.
Good to see everybody in person. So I wanted to just run through a quick discussion of the studies that we have in progress. So we have the study at the sewer plant primarily around the disinfection, but we're also providing you with a long-term capital improvement plan as part of that study. And then also the water main replacement study that we're working on. So starting with the disinfection. You know, as you know, you were awarded an EPG grant in December. And we provided the supporting documents and just recently you received the first 50% of your grant. I have pending on there, but it has arrived. And then you'll get the final 50% of that grant once we finish the report, submit it to DEC. And they, maybe do you have that, it's just a bullet outline?
Yeah.
Yep. Once they approve our engineering report, the PER is the preliminary engineering report. If they approve that, they'll release the final 50% of the grant. So we are in the midst of drafting the engineering report. And we expect to have a draft for you before the end of July to take a look at. And have the final in August, and at that time we'll submit it to DEC. So at this point, I don't have a project scope for you, which that's still coming together in the report. But again, it's going to start with a base of doing the disinfection, because that is a mandate by the state. Now, how will you fund this project? Well, the disinfection itself, that part of whatever project we compile, will be 80% covered by a WQIP grant. That's a water quality improvements project. So just a little bit of background, the state has been issuing these disinfection requirement letters for about five or six years. And they started off the first few years with their highest priority treatment plants. So the ones that were discharging to Class A water bodies, their highest priority ones. This many, that's better. And then they would only issue as many letters as they had grant money available to the communities they were sending the letters to. That was the case for the first three or four years at least, that they've been issuing the disinfection mandate. Since then, they made a clean sweep of all remaining treatment plants with the mandate letter. So you were one of those last two years that got cleaned up with all the remaining treatment plants across the state that had to meet that requirement. Now, what happened is that resulted in many more projects than what they had grant money to fund. So now they've got a bit of a logjam in that program. Last year was the first year I've seen any applicants turned down or not receiving the grant to complete their disinfection project. Talking with DEC, they said, you know, we'll get through it, and we've given these communities five years to comply. There's no award for getting done early, so be patient, we'll get you through this. In fact, they talked about making disinfection projects a little bit higher priority than the other treatment plant projects, just to get those projects through the program, get them taken care of, so they can all meet their compliance deadline. The remaining portion of the disinfection project, and perhaps other portions you may choose to do at this time that we identified in our report, can be financed through EFC. We believe you'd qualify for hardship. That won't be determined until we submit a formal application to EFC. But their hardship would allow for you to qualify for a 0% loan for anything that's not grant covered. If there are other plant upgrades identified, not related to disinfection, it said they cannot be covered by the WQIP grant that's meant for disinfection. There is another grant out there, the WIA grant, it's an acronym W-I-I-A. It's the Water Infrastructure Improvements Act grant. It's a 25% grant for sewer projects that would help offset that cost. But again, I can't have a very specific conversation with you tonight about what the costs are, because we haven't wrapped up the report. So what we'd like to do when we wrap up the report and we have long-term capital improvements spelled out, you may look at that and say, we're willing to tackle this much of the plant improvements right now, the others, we're going to defer to a later date. Depending on, you know, what your grant likelihood is, what the user cost impacts might be from taking those on, and what Mike might say about how urgent some of those are, or how many of those could wait five or 10 years. So, you know, we'll have a more specific conversation about that once we have the draft report, and we can go over that video perhaps next month. So I would see a schedule for this, you know, probably your funding picture coming together spring of 2021. Unless we go after a WIA grant, that would probably happen in the summer of 2021, which might push off your funding determination till later in 2021, like December. We would do the design over that winter of 2021 to 2022. And we would expect construction in 2022. Your compliance deadline is to have that disinfection system operating by spring of 2023. So again, I'd like to be able to go over more specifics with you on costs next month, but this is just kind of a framework of the steps that lie ahead. There's no action items for you to take at this time. Next month, you might have to make some decisions on what scope of project you'd like to tackle initially. So that, you know, we can submit that for funding applications. And moving on to the water main replacement, we're a little bit further ahead on this engineering report. It's a little more simple versus a lot of the facets that are involved with Luis's water treatment plant. So as you know, again, just recapping, you've got a rural development grant to cover the study costs. That was awarded back in April, maybe, March or April. So since then, we've been working on the preliminary engineering report. Now, I've got some supplemental sheets here to go over with you. Might as well jump into those at this point, because I've identified the project budget here of 1.1 million plus alternate. So you'll find two things in front of you, a map of the village, and this set of tables that has project costs and some funding scenarios. So there's a, there's a lot of different scenarios on this set of tables. So there's three tables on here. The top table is replacing only the water mains. So these three tables represent three different scopes of work for the project, okay? One is only replacing the water mains, and then reconnecting the water laterals to the new mains, but the existing water lateral. The second is replacing the main and replacing the water laterals from the main out to the street right away. So that way, everything within the village street right away is new. And then you would splice back into their existing water lateral at that right away line. And then the third is replacing the water main and the water laterals all the way from the main to the house. All the way turnkey to their house. So we just kind of went on to represent these three scopes for your consideration. I talked with Mike about it earlier. He didn't think it would, he probably would want to do from the main all the way to the house. Even to the right away line, I guess, was still something you'd want to think about, but, you know, most of them are near side laterals, meaning the, the homes on the same side as the, the water main itself. So probably just reconnecting those to the main. You did identify one opposite side lateral that you had a lot of freezing problems with. That one in particular might be of interest replacing, because it keeps freezing under the road. So again, these three tables represent three different scopes of work, and that's why you see the first line of the table with total project cost varies in each of these tables. So then, each table represents also four separate funding scenarios. There's three programs, three funding programs that we would probably pursue for funding. One is USDA Rural Development, the one that funded the study. The other is EFC, who has grants and loans. And then the last being CDVG, that's Community Development Block Grant. And that would be a grant. So to walk you down the first funding scenario, we'll start with the furthest left column that has cost on the top table. It's titled RD Loan Only. So this represents you receiving just a loan for the project, no grant. So the total base project is the blue on your map. Okay, so it's, it's Main Street. From just up here past the office, all the way down to Cedar Street.
Ashline to Cedar.
Yep, from Ashline all the way down to Cedar Street.
Including, including a short stint on Cedar.
Close a loop on Cedar Street. And then you'll notice a, a portion further out Main.
Mill Street up to Elm. Almost to Willow.
And then there's one short little segment out on Elm. If you look out there, you'll see a little blue segment there.
Green trailers and walnut.
So that blue represents the base project. And then you'll see a, a yellow portion on Main up by Ashline that represents an optional add-on. And then a red portion up by Willow, still Main Street, but up by Willow, that represents an optional add-on to the project. Okay, so those are the areas of water main replacement we're looking at. So back to that table with the cost. The base project is a million eighty-three. If you had to borrow that completely from Rural Development at one and a half percent interest for 38 years, that had in total annual debt service of $37,407. So just doing that base project, that blue row shows you would have a user cost increase annually of $58. So that represents a typical single-family household, one EDU, an equivalent dwelling unit. The village has approximately 650 EDUs. So every property is equated to an EDU. And an EDU is supposed to be a typical single-family household.
It's, it's 637, I think, or else.
Okay. Now, if you added on that optional yellow portion, it would add another $10 annually per user. And then if you added on the red portion, another $11 annually per user. And if you did all three, that would have a $79 per year increase impact to your users.
For EDU.
For EDU. Yep. So the second column, well, I should provide a little more explanation behind that RD Loan Only. So RD Lo, RD has eligibility criteria for grant based on your existing user rates. So they do a calculation of what they feel typical resident in the Village of Champlain could afford for water. And in this case, they've advised us, you know, for estimating purposes, use 1.8% of median household income. Median household income is $37,000 and change. They're still using 2010 census data. And 1.8 times that's roughly $670 per year. Your user rates are closer to $400 per year. So in Rural Development's eyes, you could afford to take on as much loan as would increase your rates by $270 before they'll give you a penny of grant. Which with your user base, you could borrow close to $4 million before it would increase your user rates by $270. So on just a million-dollar project, they're not going to offer you any grant, based on that criteria. So there are other grant programs. EFC has, or administers the WIA grants. The Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grants. That has no eligibility criteria based on your user rates. It's based on your MHI. If your MHI is low enough, you qualify for that grant, from the financial standpoint. What they will look at is how you qualify from a technical standpoint as well. It's, it's a little more subjective, there is a point system similar to EFC's normal grants. So EFC administers their loans, their own grants, and then these WIA grants. EFC's own grants, what they call their hardship grants, are run very strictly by your point scorer. So you are awarded points based on how bad your problems are. But they're geared more toward treatment problems. You don't get that many points for replacing problematic water mains. For example, this last year, you had to score at least 95 points to be eligible for their hardship grants. If you have a treatment violation with the health department, you get 100 points automatically, okay? For replacing aged water mains, it's like 20 points. So you probably won't reach that 95-point threshold. But WIA does not follow that same strict adherence to the points. They start at the top with points, but they will skip projects to find a community that's ready to move forward with their project. So they do require you to take some of the preliminary steps for your project. They require you to do seeker and bond resolution before you even apply, which are steps you'll have to take for the project anyway. They just want to know that the applicant is serious enough before they start considering move for grant. So we ran a scenario of getting a WIA grant with whatever's left covered in a Rural Development loan. So that grant has a maximum of 3 million or 60% of your project cost, whichever's left. In this case, it's 60%. So a grant of 649,000. So I'm on that second column now of numbers. With the balance of 433,000 to be covered by a Rural Development loan. So that drops your debt service by more than half. Now it's down to 14,962. So the cost increase to your users annually would be $23 for the base project. An additional $4 for the yellow optional add-on, and another $4 for the optional red add-on. A total of $32 per year per user, per EDU. The, the next, the third column, the only difference there is we're looking at an EFC loan versus a Rural Development loan. There's not a ton of difference, the rates are very similar, the interest rates. Other than EFC goes with a 30-year loan versus a 38, paying it off in a little shorter period of time, which means your annual payments are a little higher. And that results in the base project of $28 per year increase. And then five for the yellow and five for the red optional add-ons, a total of 38. And then the fourth column contemplates getting a CDVG loan, Community Development Block Grant. That's administered to the Office of Community Renewal. They have up to $1 million grants, and they have no local match requirements. So we would anticipate maxing that out, which would leave only 83,000 left in loan. And in this case, we showed it with EFC, you could do that with EFC or Rural Development, it really wouldn't matter either way. Other than there would be a slight difference in, you know, the loan payment, because of the different terms. I'm just saying you would have the option of doing either. The annual debt service in that case drops to only $3,497 per year, and will result in an increase in user rates of $5.
And that's our eligibility for that one.
So, um, starting back with Rural Development, I'll just recap them all. Rural Development has rolling application acceptance, all year round, you can submit Rural Development loan application, or grant application. EFC, you have to submit for their loan by August. Their WIA grant deadline last year was the second weekend in September. However, those haven't been announced yet this year. As you can imagine, the coronavirus has thrown all the funding programs into a tailspin. They haven't announced anything yet, not CFAs, not the WIA grants, none of those programs have been announced. And then with CDVG, their application is under the umbrella of CFAs, haven't been announced yet. And you would have to do an income survey. Now whether or not Office of Community Renewal would allow you to do a survey for just those streets, or for the whole village, would have to be determined by them. They're going to have to tell us what would be acceptable. The only reason I bring that up is because Candace from RCAP, who I think assisted you early on with some of the, with the RFP for the water study, suggested that you could just survey those streets. My only concern is, I mean, whatever's left for the loan to pay for this project is going to be spread over the entire village. So I think it, it might be a tough argument to say, we should only survey these particular streets for the grant, save yourself the problem of surveying the whole village. When you're going to turn around and spread the cost for the loan over the whole village. So who's benefiting from it? Just these streets, or the whole village? I think you might run into a problem there, but the only way to get clarification is to ask the Office of Community Renewal. But if you have to survey the whole village, RCAP will do it, if you can get them and if they're available. And they're just one representative for the whole state. So she may be able to do it, she may not, may not want her to do it, that's totally your call. There are private consultants that do it, third party. And their price for the village would probably range between 10 and 20 grand, just to throw a number out for you. You would not be able to make this year's CFA deadline. Probably under any circumstance, a delay of CFAs this year, because that income survey could take months and months and months. So you'd be looking at a 2021 application for that program if you so choose to pursue it. And you would need a good portion of that time just to get the income survey completed.
You can't use the census?
So they do use the census. Well, take that back. So the US Census stopped taking income information in the 2000 census. 2010, no income information was collected in the actual census. What they do now is they use information off the American Community Survey, and you can look that up online. So they do sampling every year of every community. I don't know how much sampling they do, because I've never gotten a call in 10 years for it, I don't know if anybody else has. I think the sampling's pretty limited, and I've seen some of the results pretty flawed. Based on just what I know about certain communities and what their income levels are, depends on who picks up the phone and actually answers the call. You know, whether it's the, the doctor in town, or someone else, you know. But based on, I'd have to look up to see what year they're using now, because it, they're using like the 2000, I can't remember, 17 or 18, maybe even as recent as the 19, but I'm not sure, American Community Survey information. And you have to have at least 51% of your population in the low to moderate income range. And they consider that to be less than 80% of what the statewide MHI is. You have to have at least 51% in the low to moderate. And based on the year income survey they're using, you're at 50.0%. You're just under pre-qualified. So in order to qualify, if you're not pre-qualified from that, you'd have to do an income survey. And then there's no guarantee that the results of the income survey will qualify you.
Right, so there's 10, $20,000 flushed down the sewer.
Yeah.
They're not doing this stuff, much cheaper.
So I think, you know, the Rural Development application, the EFC loan application are no-brainers. We should just submit those as a matter of course. The WIA grant, I think, is your most probable grant. And to qualify for that, like I said, you'd have to do seeker and bond resolution. If somehow they keep that deadline on track for mid-September, you would need to get the ball rolling now. So seeker process, just to refresh your memory, starts with filling out Part 1 of the environmental assessment form. And then the board declaring yourself, declaring your intent to be the lead agency for the process. Then you have to send the Part 1 you completed out to other involved agencies. So in Part 1, you identify who's a potential involved agency. If a project's going to happen in a state right away, DOT's an involved agency. It's a water line, so the Department of Health is an involved agency. These funding agencies will be involved agencies. You have to send them a letter expressing your intent. And then they are supposed to respond within 30 days whether or not they concur with you being lead agency. They will, they always do. However, some drag their feet and use their whole 30 days. We can try to push them, try to get it back in five or 10 days. Soon as you have it back, or 30 days if they don't respond at all, you can be lead agency. Then you complete Parts 2 and 3 of the environmental assessment form, and do a negative declaration of environmental impact, and then bond resolution. So the steps are, you have to add a board meeting, declare your intent to be lead agent. The very next day, we send out the involved agency letters. Soon as they come back, you can have, schedule your next board meeting. We'll complete Parts 2 and 3 for you, if you have them for that meeting. You agree with all the answers we provide. Then at that second board meeting, you do your negative declaration and pass your bond resumes from that same meeting. Then you have to wait 30 days after the bond resolution to print your stoppable notice. And that has to be in for 20 days, or 20 days after that, officially you can take out your bond. So how long would this whole process take? From the time you start your first meeting, you know, you're probably talking 10 to 15 to 20 days maybe, before you can schedule your, before you can have your second meeting. ten to fifteen to twenty days maybe before you can schedule your, before you can have your second meeting. To give enough time for those involved agency letters to go out, then to respond, and then have enough days advance notice to hold a board meeting. Um, and then thirty days after that for the bond resolution period to expire, and then twenty days after that for a stop. So, I mean, you're talking roughly two months. So if you had a special board meeting before the end of July to do the first one, then by, um, you know, mid-late September, you would be through the process in order to apply for WIA. Now, they have allowed us to submit applications, um, and we were open about this with, with EFC for the WIA grant without the estoppel period overlaid. So that last twenty days, they can be flexible on. If that hasn't fully expired, they just wanna copy the actual bond resolution. So you could make this year's WIA grant deadline if it's about the time period it normally is. We don't know when it's going to be, to be honest with you. It might still be mid-September, it might get pushed back to October. They may not have WIA's this year. Honestly, don't know. But if you wanted to be as prepared as possible, that would be the track to get on. Otherwise, you're waiting for twenty-twenty-one WIA's, which would be September twenty-twenty-one, to apply.
I should add that I asked Matt to do one additional, uh, project cost for us. I asked him if he could come up with, uh, a project cost on Main Street Route nine from Ash Lane to Blue Line all the way down to Cedar only.
To the river crossing basically without doing the extension?
Not the, not the, uh, turn on Cedar, not the upper part by Little and not the lower part by No.
So reduce the base project size?
Because we know that that's the, the, the most desperate section. And I think we need to know what that cost would be if they decide to go with something a little bit smaller.
Yeah, we got thirty-five bands in that stretch.
And those, yeah, when he said he would.
For now.
Yeah, that's no problem. So what we would do with, in case there's still a little bit of uncertain, so let's say you want to try to apply for WIA this year and you want to take the step starting in July to get through the seeker. Um, that may be the next opportunity we're to gather for you to decide what's, you know, what base project and additional add-ons you wanna tackle. Um, so for the seeker, we would probably clear all of them for the environmental review. Not knowing exactly at that point, so, but before you do the bond resolution, we would need to know how big of a project you do wanna take on. The base, add-on one, add-on two, or add-on three. But for the seeker, we would just clear them all. You can always reduce the size of your project from the seeker. You can't go bigger.
And what about grant ones if they do, if this modified base, the smaller base to some name is, is it bigger?
So the WIA grant is sixty percent.
So they'll still cover that?
Yeah. Uh, these, these four scenarios would all still be in play if you reduce the base size of project. So, um, for the WIA grant, it would just mean sixty percent of a smaller project loss. For the CDVG, um, you would get to the point where it could be a hundred percent grant. So if you reduce the base project to seven hundred thousand, you could potentially get a seven hundred thousand dollar CDVG grant. But, you know, CDVGs are pretty, um, competitive. And you gotta get, first of all, get to the point where you can even qualify to apply through the income survey. Now, WIA's grants can cover project costs retroactively. So, I'm just to throw this out there, just so you understand all the options. You know, out of urgency, you wanted to get started with a project with just a loan in hand. You could, and then continue to apply for the WIA. And the WIA grant can cover costs retroactively. You can go back, as long as the construction's not a hundred percent finished. CDVG does not allow that, and they are very strict about that. That they will not cover a single penny prior to you getting their grant award. So, I mean, just in case, you know, it becomes catastrophic and there's just no fixing anything anymore. You've got bands on top of bands on top of bands on the water main.
That's what that is, yeah. Any other questions from the board?
So for, for action items, from a decision-making standpoint, um, you'd have to decide what scope of project. This scope, this scope, or this scope. Um, and then, you know, once we revise the numbers for next month or, or for your next board meeting, you will have to decide, you know, base project, add-on one, add-on two, and add-on three. Um, I guess the only thing that, uh, if you wanted to act on it, that you would actually have to take action on right now would be whether or not you wanna start seeker, um, as soon as possible. Which would probably require a special board meeting to get it on track to be done by September, by sometime in September. It's entirely up to you.
Right, with all of us knowing, do we have any chance of getting any of these? In an economy that is tanking?
Well, this is what I would anticipate, um, because we're having funding conversations with communities across the state is, I could see, I, we can all see probable short-term impacts with funding. In fact, to WIA grants that some communities have in hand already that they're actually paying for the projects for, the state has stopped distribution of the grant.
State's not paying much for anything right now.
So there are some immediate impacts. And there may be delays with CFAs this year. They may not have many of the CFAs. Uh, they may skip a funding round this year completely. But what we would anticipate is probably, um, a surge in infrastructure funding sometime in the next year. Uh, I think it's inevitable that the federal government's going to pass an infrastructure bill. It'll be a trillion, two trillion, three trillion. I don't know, um...
Where are they gonna get that money from?
They'll keep printing it like they did the last two trillion. I, 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 I think that's the one thing both political parties will agree on. And they'll both try to sell it that it was their idea and it'll be just like the stimulus funding after the recession. So I, I think, I think you wanna keep your project in, in the mix for funding consideration, which, you know, get the RD application in, get the EFC, um, loan application in, um...
But both of those, you said, we have very minimal chance of getting.
Those two loans?
Yes.
Oh, you, you'll get one of those, or both of those loans? Now, they're, they're happy to hand out loan money.
Oh, yeah.
It's the two grants, the WIA grant and the CBV, CDVG grant that are the more competitive ones. Um, the WIA you can't apply for without seeker and bond resolution. You have to do those. Seeker's in our contract with you to do for you. It's just how soon do you wanna get it started? You wanna get it started to be able to apply for WIA's if they're available this year. That's our, that's something you've already hired us to do.
But we can have a special board meeting in a couple of weeks. And I don't think we're ready to make any kind of decisions right now. Plus, we have the information about the, sure, the, the, the...
Either way, you're gonna do the seeker.
Correct. And, and they're, and they're going to do it for us anyway. You want, do you wanna do the seeker tonight in terms of stating that our intentions in subsequent orders?
Sooner or later.
Well, if you want to pass seeker, we need to complete part one for you.
Right.
So you, you can't do your, um, intent to be lead agency without a completed part one in front of you. So, so I guess what I'd be looking for, for direction from the board is, yes, we'd like to get started. Please have part one for us done by the specific date we're gonna have a board.
Which you've already contracted with us to do.
Correct.
Yep. So then I think, yeah, but I think we should tell you to do part one. I don't know what a specific date it could be though. I'm gonna take some thinking out.
Okay.
Can I, can I just get back to you with that, Matt?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Give me a call tomorrow?
Yep, yep, absolutely. You know, the CDVG one, you've got time to think about it.
I think that's really a long shot.
Again, you're not, there's no way you're gonna make an application deadline for, for this year. Regardless of whatever date they push back CFAs to, just the income survey's gonna be too big to tackle. Um, to get it done this year. So, I mean, take some time to think about that.
Yeah.
You may wanna have a call with Office of Community Renewal, say, this is our project, this is what we're thinking about doing. What do you think? Charlie Fillion is the contact there.
Oh, that's Candace's connection?
She would've talked to Charlie, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll figure out a date and I'll, I'll give you a call.
Okay.
How much time do you need?
We can do part one probably in a week's time.
I'm, I'm available straight till, till Thursday.
Yeah, I agree.
I just looked for the twenty-fourth.
I have to check.
You can get back to me.
I'll get back to you. We'll figure that out soon.
So I, you kinda covered a lot of things. If you have any questions, be happy to try to answer those to the best of my ability.
Well, thank you for laying it out so clearly.
Anything else for me this evening?
I think we're all set. Any other questions anywhere?
No.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Getting here.
Hopefully they're running for the tornado on your own home.
Yeah.
What tornado?
A lot of towns in our county.
Alright, uh, back to our agenda. Report from the Coast Patrol Officer that was emailed to you. I don't know if you have any questions or comments or anything you want me to share with Mike. I, I think it came in on Thursday. Nevermind. Oh, you did, okay. No questions? Good evening. Now that the North Country has moved into phase four of the moving New York Forum. We've been able to reopen the playground. Currently, basketball is still not permitted and we will not replace the pole and movements of those who are disallowed. Uh, one new addition at the playground is the large map of the United States painted on the tarmac. I would like to thank those who donated their time to this project. This includes Thor Frostik, Carter and Ben Fladett, the Coen family involving Christina, Alex, Dylan, and Jerry, the Blor family, Rachel, Grace, and Josiah, the Rye family, Patricia, Natalie, Maria, and Tess, and the Malinsky family, James, Court, and Mickey. Everyone pitched in and created a beautiful mosaic. If you haven't taken the time to go down and look at it, check it out. Very, very nice. And the kids were, I was surprised how many states the kids knew. They'd stand on one and say, I'm standing on Utah, and, uh, they, they knew them really quite well. And then they also talked about, I get to paint Florida, or I get to paint Pennsylvania.
That's really, really good.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the champagne farmers market will begin on Saturday, July eighteenth, from nine a.m. until noon. And run every Saturday until mid-September in Pocket Park. Please support our local vendors by purchasing their produce and other handcrafted items. We are having some problems with four-wheelers, both on the village streets and on the racetrack. They are creating excessive noise and unsafe conditions for themselves and their neighbors. In addition, there has been damage to the bridge and the path on the racetrack. I understand that four-wheelers are fun and popular. I get that. But they must be used responsibly in permitted areas. If you, any residents are having issues with this problem, please contact law enforcement. We intend to pursue these, uh, those who are damaging the, the, the racetrack. As many of you have probably noticed, our Department of Public Works is preparing road shoulders for upcoming paving and re-establishing ditches, some of which haven't had attention for years. I, I will keep residents informed as to which streets are being worked on through our Village Facebook page. If you do have a question or a concern regarding village work, I request that you call the Office for Information rather than bragging about it on social media. It is most helpful to have the facts before speculation is posted. All of our employees are dedicated to doing the best job possible here. And when their work is criticized publicly without the correct information, it is discouraging and unfair. May you stay cool and healthy throughout this scorcher of a summer. Wear a mask, stay six feet apart, look out for one another. Let us continue to move forward together. Thank you. Report from the trustees.
Our, our group did a little bit of a rundown, maybe, on the mass. It was, it was much quicker than we expected to.
Ah.
It went really fast.
It was about two hours maybe, maybe?
Uh, two, yeah, two hours. Um, and everyone was helped, were right into helping. We didn't have to tell them what to do. They dove right in and knew exactly what to do. And the worst part was putting the stents was down. The wind was blowing, but we got it down and, yeah, that's great. And the only thing I've done are virtual photographs. I've done three, right, two in June and one so far in July. Uh, the first couple, I had three families. Um, and this last one, so far, we've all had one family participate. And they just put their picture with kids running online at their time. And, and every, every time, there's a different theme. So the school called it on, this last one was very blue, and then after the whole step. We've got some participation, not as expected, you know, not as many as we expect. No, we don't, we can do it.
Yeah.
Last one, after one.
Thanks for, thanks for all that you're doing.
So the volleyball nets were ordered and the two pieces of, of equipment were ordered. And we have enough money to, uh, pay for some of the ground stuff underneath because they promise safety. Um, so, you know, that's good. On, on, not for the village, but for all those interested, as of this Wednesday, visitation will begin in nursing homes. It's extremely, extremely strict and each facility needs to have a plan approved by DOH before Wednesday. For the day, there's only going to be ten percent of the residents allowed to have visitors. So it's going to be very, very minimal and there is no visitation whatsoever if there has been any case of COVID in the building. So we, you have a few facilities that will be excluded from opening as of Wednesday. Um, and, um, busmen are back in starting runs, so... You know, it's all new. We'll see. This came out at three o'clock on Friday, uh, evening, um, with no notice to anybody. This came out at 3 o'clock on Friday, uh, evening, um, with no notice to anybody, uh, if this was coming. No notice to the embassment office at all. So, you know, everybody's scrambling over the weekend trying to come up with a plan. Um, and it's going to be very interesting. I, I don't know how they're going to monitor all of this without stirring people's blood even more. So, please be patient with it. Everyone is trying. They're trying to keep all your loved ones safe. Um, and it's not to be vindictive and keep them away because we brought you in there and we're here to help your loved ones. But any questions, you can, you can reach out to the Facility Works myself at any time, um, for the point of respect.
Thank you for the important job you're doing, Amy.
Yep. Um, the only thing that I have to report on is the Champlain Water Board. Um, a letter was sent to the Village of Champlain. I kind of thought we'd have that within our correspondence tonight. Um, it was sent to Narvik Petragen, the Board of Trustees, with a copy of the initiatives and timelines that the Water Board has come up with. Um, on the same day that it was delivered here to this office by myself, it was also delivered once to Sarabaneo at the town of Champlain. Um.
Do you want me to make copies right now, please?
Uh, that would be great because I think everybody really needs to be looking at this.
I've got it right on my desk. I didn't realize that it hadn't been distributed to everybody. I thought that was only my copy.
No, I was.
I thought you'd put them in the boxes.
No, I left that up to the girls to put on the agenda and, um, but everybody does need to look at this. It does have, um, I can read the letter to you?
What? I can.
Okay, it says, "Dear Mayor and Petragen Board Trustees, please find enclosed the Water Board's initiatives and timelines, clearly defining the requirements of all parties so the Water Board can efficiently meet their required deadlines as per, as per the IMA dated November 25th, 2019." And it's by, um, all five members of the Water Board. So, the town has theirs as well. We have been diligently working on this. This portion of it right here to come up with the requirements has been more than time-consuming. We have spent an enormous amount of time just getting to this point. Um, and we will be, you know, before we know it, the deadlines are, are gonna be fast approaching. So, we need to be moving forward with this as soon as possible. Um, we, you know, the towns, the town has a set of that, uh, timelines as well as does the Water Board with getting their information in. So, um, if you have any questions, you can reach out to us. Send us an email. Give us a call.
Got some ashes.
Now, any questions on it?
Yeah, just, uh, I, yeah. Um, thank you for, you know, this is kind of a long process and I think you organized it very well. Appreciate all that hard work that's gone into it. I don't have any questions. It's very straightforward. It's very well laid out.
I've been asked at this point, like, we're hoping to, you know, to get the reports back. So, we can get started on the early part, but it's still going down the middle again. So, we're hoping that we can get the results.
So, which, which one, are you talking about the, um?
Uh, so right now, we're, we're, we need last year's, you think, whether it's been some days. Um, if we didn't get quarters, you know, so we're, we're really at June 15th now.
We're at June 15th, yeah.
And, uh, approaching July, I think.
Tentatively, we're looking to meet again with the Water Board on the 24th, um, of July.
Okay.
So, so are you looking for last year's, like, you know, you know, where you have your, your dates, like September 15th, December 15th, which we had already discussed. So, you, are you looking at those quarters for last year?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we need all of that. The last fiscal year is bigger, too. From what this year's, do you, uh, I don't know.
I know, but when you were in here discussing this, we weren't, we, we, it wasn't discussed that we were supposed to get the central issue for last year.
We were projecting for.
Yeah, we're projecting for and not for last year's. But if that's what you're looking for, then.
So, the, the one we've been working on is from the previous year, in 2018, 19.
Mm-hmm.
Remember we talked about that? I said, "This is, this is great to, we're getting this laid out, but the data itself is already falling behind." The, the part is ahead of that data because the IMA wasn't signed for this past year. So, that work was trying to lay out how, how to provide the data to us. And I remember telling you that, well, once we're completed with that, then we're gonna plug in the data for the next fiscal year because now we're up to a point.
So, now you're looking for 1920?
1920, yeah, yeah. And we can finish the 18, 19 year work on because I don't want to just toss that away. It's weird information, but the one that we need for a report is the 19 and 20 year.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it was clear the other day when we were discussing the dates and, you know, the different fiscal years. I think Juanita and I were thinking that we were talking about these dates going forward. When you said we, we need for everything.
Well, I know, but if you think about that, then we can do a report for this too.
I know. I understand that. But I'm just saying, I don't think that we understood exactly what you were requesting.
Well, that was the reason for this, is to, to let you know that our, our report is doing up over first.
And basically, it's the previous year. We're off, we'll be off by a year.
Yeah.
You have to look half a year.
Yeah, have you? I mean, it's only, you can determine the, look, make sure the water rate, water rate, like, in the basis would be for the, uh, the, the town for the, uh, for the ministry.
So, so going forward on September 15th, it'll be the previous three months that you're looking at. But right now, you want all of the data for the previous year, correct?
To get caught up, yes.
To get caught up.
Get caught up. And then we're gonna start the 2021 data on September.
Okay. So, you can do that, right, the previous year?
Yeah, from July 1 until current.
Okay.
The, the reason is, maybe the 15th is, and then, and then also, we, we thought we did. It means two weeks leeway following the closing of that quarter.
Yeah.
And then one of the other issues, just to add, was that the fiscal year quarters and the water billing quarters are not the same. So.
Yeah, that adds a lot of confusion.
That added, that added confusion to it. All right. I understand it now, so thank you.
That's a great question, but how can we name that? Do we have to bill on the calendar year and then base all of our?
Well, it'd be hard to change that.
It would, would? Or would be?
I think it would be.
It would be?
If then you'd want to do it according to our fiscal year, which I think would be.
It changes it better, huh?
I think we do that. But it would be confusing.
The first, the first one on the shore, uh, uh, it began, but started June, June 1st, sort of, on the summer quarters. Where, um, the next, the next one would be September 1st.
Why do you have to start it?
I, I don't know. I really don't know.
I guess it was probably easier to go the mere calendar year than it would be fiscal year.
I don't know why the Village fiscal year has to start, because you can, uh, and the town starts in January.
Yeah.
So, you need to, you need to go in time, right?
And some people start, um, July 1st, so.
Right, and there's July 1st.
Yeah, so, you know, it's.
Anyway, if we could, uh, if we were to switch our billing to our fiscal year, it would balance that out. Make the data a lot. I mean, this changes a bunch of things.
That's true. Yeah.
Well, yeah. All right. Time to have, is there more to add to?
For my report, I just, I just wanted to report on, um, one, the blood drive we had, the 29th of June, succe-, very successful. Um, there was, uh, 29 total, 26 successful donations. So, I'm just staying up with EMS. And we will remain at the emergency station, which is working at that moment. It's not going to fix it.
No.
So, just wanted to let, let you know that. And we are working, we have, we're scheduled for 16th. Clark and I are gonna start assembling the launch and the box. Um, I think if we know of someone else that's handy in the village, I've asked Joe Ashland, but that happens to be 3, and they'll be working, so he might be able to do that, I think, on a weekly basis. We know somebody, I think three of us will be coming. So, Mike's gonna get stuff laid out for us a bit ahead of time. Bring the skids over and put them in the barrel.
I'm streaming out on the 16th block.
Yeah, it's Thursday, it's pretty warm. It's a tough time here.
It's Thursday.
What time are you doing it?
Uh, yeah, it was 8:30, I think it was 8:30.
I think it was 8:30.
Yeah, 8:30, I'm pretty sure.
Uh, I can, sure.
Okay.
Anything else, Tom?
No, that's all.
All right. Thank you. Report from the Port Treasure?
Um, we had a water and sewer belling. Water was 63,07477. And sewer was 65,55796.
You're not missing anything?
Uh, there's no, I don't.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, with the warrant, we need to do a transfer. First, um, um, A1990.4, which is contingent, for $835 to, to A1420.11, which is general code. Um, we got new code books. Um. Yeah, and that's like two.
I know.
Sorry.
And we've come back, we're gonna get some crazy by the county.
Crazy. Uh, but we did have two additions, so we had to, they charge you for those. And then, then we had to have them, they don't do the small ones, so we had to get the bigger books.
And we get all the updates.
Yeah.
It is great to have a warrant. Uh, we may have a motion for that transfer.
A big motion, transfer from A1890.4, $835, to A1420.11.
Got a second? Second. Did you say 8:45 or 8:35?
8:35.
Okay, I thought you said 45. I wrote down 35, so.
Set mask. It is a little.
Well, you do, you're a little, it is, it's a big couple, too.
Yeah.
Big difference.
Any discussion on this one? Your call.
Justice Malinsky. Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Justice Tronblake.
Aye.
Justice Tronblake.
Aye.
Mayor Petragen.
Aye.
I'm never early in the call. I'm late, oh.
Um, we have additional invoices to add to the warrant for 1,27540 for a total warrant of 19,2657.
Motion to give the warrant. So, have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, um, the expenditure for Village Fest. Is that the playground equipment?
Correct.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
Yeah. I assume. Um, so I didn't make a transfer for that one because Jana has spoke to, um, the health.
Our health department.
And we should be getting it recovered by the end of the month.
Yeah. Yeah, they said it takes two weeks and it's in the process, so. It's fine.
Um, the outdoor, uh, decor, I'm assuming is that for the?
Three new Christmas decorations.
Oh, they're for Christmas decorations, okay. What did we get?
Tree, a candle and this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, uh.
Those people fold, right?
We got, I don't know, how many, how many, how many drills.
We got, we got the lines to switch, uh.
We got the, uh, drills. Other questions?
Yep, one more.
Okay.
Um, and, and it just could be migraine as much, but the, uh, Canal Street Water Plant Electric, is that normal? Are we a little high there? It seems high to me, but I didn't have the old one to look at.
Snowfall street?
I can't, 74991. Yeah, 35, just 35, there's two, there's.
It was 704 last month.
Are we tending to be higher i- in that? I didn't, recall it being in the 700, so I just was like, wow.
The new, the new water plant is costing more than what she's.
Yeah.
Yeah. I will, I will send you the, um, permit for the year of what it costs for each. Because I do have it on my computer.
Oh, that's good, nice, yeah.
It's, it had a lot more horsepower there for filtration and.
Well, I was just wondering if we are using a lot more water with that.
Well, we did flushing, we did flushing in that too, so we had a lot more. Plus, we had five breaks in eight days, or four in eight, we had five breaks, so we lost. Not a lot there, we did lose a little bit. Caught it right away, so. It's, it's more than one. Not really, yeah, we caught it right away, so we had a little terrible melt, but.
We do spend a lot of electricity, you know, overall.
Well, you got, you got 50 horse motors there now, it's a question of filtration, you know, it's a lot more.
But I mean, overall, overall.
Oh, yes.
The wastewater treatment plant, they vary expensive. It's a lot. I'm hoping when we get the street light swapped out, we have a load there in the city, it's fine. We spend a lot.
And I think that'll be small, compared to your plant.
I know, I know. It's just hard to find ways to, uh, to save.
It's a fair, cool plan.
Yeah.
And the blowers, it was gonna be less, but.
Uh, I'd work.
I don't know.
Say, yeah.
You know. Say it's getting less. There you go. Um, and then the community beautification. We spent 3482 on the whole budget. What was coming out of that?
Oh.
Oh, we had to do the launch.
Yeah, that's part of the launch.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
I knew I had to something to look at, that's why I said.
Yes, yeah.
The concrete, probably.
Okay, and are we gonna move things into that? Or is it considered beautification?
That's the right town, probably.
Is there some, some, subcategories in there?
So, it's all new.
Okay, yeah. Anything else?
I think that one, that's separate, we should have.
Yeah, we got to separate everything, too.
I think that's all I had.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Okay. Your call.
Justice Malinsky.
Aye.
Justice Tronblake.
Aye.
Justice Tronblake.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petragen.
Aye.
I was ready to come in. Report from the superintendent's.
Uh, well, we're still staying busy. We've had, uh, quite a lot of meetings since.
Uh, well, still staying busy, we've had uh five water leaks since we met here last month.
Only five?
Yeah. Four in eight days, but we had five. Uh, we're still working on streets, cutting shoulders, ditching, trying to get ready for paving, um. South Street, the north side of South Street, or the west side of, um, of Route nine of South Street is ready to go, um. We're seeing a way to get a few stones to dig out of the roadway, we're working on Prospect right now. Um, the town's supposed to come up this week with a grader, probably cut shoulders on Prospect. And we're trying to widen it a little bit on sides, um, especially one side, it's pretty narrow that road. Um. We've had a little, we've had a few complaints, not terrible, but uh, some people don't like their drafts far enough, but. I didn't know what it is, I can't, gotta get it ready to, to paving, so. Um. I've got a water and sewer, uh, water sewer has to be installed, uh, before our paving, and I don't know if I'm gonna have time to do this, this is one of the Cedar Street. Spent a year or so ago, still not done, um, the road is still cut out. I don't know what I'm gonna, I don't know what I'm gonna be able to do this, but we'll have to look at it as, as it goes on here. Uh, right now, it's mostly getting roads ready, um, it's, I gotta follow up, but it's looking right now that beginning of August, probably, gonna be here to pave. So that'll only do just two weeks. Um, other than that, I've got a partial list of stuff that I'm trying to complete, got DI grains rebuilt, um. Some are gonna be raised, road lights, I've got one on, one or two in Church Street that are starting to collapse. We've got a bunch of patching to do in bad areas, uh, we still got, we'll have to shoulder roads with stone after, uh, after paving is done, we still got sidewalk replacement. Um. We've got a water service up on Main Street that freezes every winter, and I've gotta. Retap and, and, uh, repair the service. Um. Sewer plant, we probably, we've got weeks of work there, we've got empty tanks, we've got open air line, we've still gotta change, we've got three tanks to suck out with a vat truck, replace all the fine bunged diffusers. We've got a hole in one of the tanks, and one's leaking to another, that's gonna be patched. Um, and I want them to get going on scraping and painting some of the piping. Still gotta, uh, remove the old generator at the water plant, I'm gonna have to put in a retaining wall, or a twelve inch stick pad for the new generator, once that, uh, once that comes in. Um, ditching and culvert installations, I still gotta, I still gotta finish, I started early on, on Oak Street, but we're not done up there. I've still got ditching and stone placement of the bike path. Um, we've got trimming of trees, and some tree removal, in some areas, and by sidewalks are scraped, and, uh, of course, I'll have to push it again to do this fall, so I have to get a pole. I'm gonna duck to keep it going though, next year. Um, other than that, mostly right now is, is streets, trying to get streets ready for, for paving, because if we miss it, we're done for another year or so. Um. I've got a few, I don't know, I think I had sent Janet an email, I think you already forwarded it on, for the, I've got a few requests, one is the, the generator for the water plant, we had, um. We had approved. We had a, we have the old generator and the old generator tank down there, um, the old generator tank is pretty much outdated. Um, I, I did ask. The generator company about, um, tank sizing, and they do, make a tank that's twice the size, that would give us. Um, a minimum of forty-eight hours of runtime versus a twenty-four hour runtime. Uh, enough charge for that would be thirteen hundred dollars. Um. We should be more than forty-eight, only because it's not gonna run twenty-four seven at full load.
Full load.
Right, um, but with this generator too, like our other ones there, every week they run for so long. So this will cut down on our, our time as far as having to haul fuel there. You know, it, it, it'll give us a little bit more, uh, a little bit more space in between. What we'll do is the, the old tank that is there, that is there now, we'll end up, you know, pumping it out, once it's empty, then we'll remove it, but. We have to change that tank, the tank with the dike, uh, around it, the containment, and it's not, um, it's not up to, it's not up to code. There's no alarms, there's no anything on it, it's just a tank, a tank. So eventually that would have to be replaced, so. While we're doing the new generator, I think it's, would be beneficial to get the larger tank. Um, it doesn't change your footprint, it's just taller, it raises, it raises the height up, which, uh, I mean, pads still do the same, probably, we get for a twelve foot by a four and a half foot pad, twelve inch stick. For a generator, so I've, uh, I've been asking for if it's, if it would entertain spending an extra thirteen hundred to double the size of the tank on the, uh, on that generator. It would, it would go from a two hundred and eighty gallon to a five hundred and eighty-three gallon tank.
Yeah.
Monita, what account would that come out of?
So the, we got, we have forty thousand aside for the generator, and the additional approximately ten thousand dollars is going to come from our dollars. I believe, I'll discuss that later. So what, what we need to do is we're going to amend a motion, we amended, this is our third, this is our third change to this, but this should do it, I think. So in April, we approved forty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-two. And then we add it on another just over three thousand in June, to forty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-five. And now we need to add, we're talk, we're discussing adding another thirteen hundred, which brings it to forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five.
So you want a motion to amend the original, or is this a separate motion?
Well, what we did in June was, what, and I think you were in the data, Tom, is you, you amended the original, the, the original motion in April to include the increase of three thousand. So now, I think we just need to amend the June one to add the thirteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
To it.
So that was for wire sizing?
Yes.
The wire wasn't heavy enough?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So if amended is all right, make a motion to amend the June motion?
Yes, which at that point was a forty-eight.
To include the thir- additional thirteen hundred dollars for a larger. Need to take. So we can remove our old one, which I don't even understand.
I believe that total will be forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five.
Yeah. Can I check it?
That's what I have, but someone hasn't checked it.
Forty-five fifty-six before?
It was forty-eight five five five.
Five five five, yeah.
Plus thirteen hundred.
Forty-nine eight fifty-five.
Yeah, forty-nine eight fifty-five.
For a total of forty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Like, any discussion?
No, I just want to add that, I think we have to do.
I agree.
Yeah. I have to put that, what we think for the beginning of, of, of.
Use that, once it's updated, we can.
Yeah, we can put it up.
And I'm glad it doesn't change the footprint.
No, it's, it saves just how, it's like a purpose, it saves just sort of a. There isn't much of change, but I feel it's fine.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petrus.
Aye.
The next one I have is for the pile truck, we've got two bids back for loading the gas. One was for a, it was Kenworth and a Buffalo, and the other one's for Champlain Cedarville. I made a shoot with a two mile on there.
Yep. Uh, those are the only two that we can see.
Yes.
So we can see that the price difference is only five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Five fifty-seven, forty-eight. The biggest, the biggest difference would be the, the closest dealership. Forty mile difference, that's the only. They had the same, they had the same orders, they don't want the same order.
Well, are you looking for a motion to choose a new one?
Yeah, we need a motion so we can discuss it.
Yeah, I would make a motion, we, uh, we choose one locally, one hundred and ninety thousand nine dollars in terms of. One, if it's local, and two, if it's close.
So a second. Discussion.
How long does this thing last us?
Hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Ten.
Here. But at least, I mean, we do. Yeah. It's a lot of money, but at least we, we projected this.
I know. This all absolutely.
It's what transportation says, isn't it?
Yeah.
We won't get it from this spring. Piles are young, lots of them back up till April, next year.
Cold will probably not come back.
Of course, the deal goes every, any of the doctors, I promise.
Maybe it comes quicker. Soon as it gets over, soon as it gets over.
Huh?
Maybe it will come quicker.
The truck can be here, what is the, the box and file?
Maybe that surprises us.
There's, they were booked out the repo. Once you, once they, once we, I gotta go on our GS and say we accept, once they get the PO, then they can hold us a spot, they can hold us a spot until they get the PO. That's all I have.
Any other questions? We've got this motion here, any other comments on the, uh, roll call please?
Trustee Petrus. Trustee Petrus. Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petrus.
Aye.
All right. Uh, correspondence?
Um, correspondence from New York State DOT regarding chips funding, and correspondence from Northern Tier Housing donations.
Oh, that's, um.
I didn't add that, but I'm gonna.
Oh.
We'll help.
John Martin. Correspondence from states and locals regarding water, so adjusting.
Oh, I was, I was going to put that on.
Well, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think you did submit it today or something.
I was just gonna add that on your business. Um, I, for correspondence, I just wanna say, uh, you probably all noticed that states are deserving the right to reduce that by twenty percent, chips. And, um, I'm, and I'd like to make a public statement thanking Northern Tier Housing for their generous donation of two thousand dollars. It's a great partnership, I think, that we have. New business, resolution of polling place and time. Let me read this regulation. A resolution polling place and time, twenty twenty elections Village of Champlain, whereas the next village elections for offices of the Village of Champlain, New York, will be held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty. And whereas the board of trustees of said village must designate by resolution a polling place and hours, which the polls shall be open per section fifteen dash one zero four dash three B of the state of New York election law. Then, be it therefore resolved that the board of trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined the polling place shall be at the Village of Champlain office, one 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 zero four Route nine, Champlain, New York. With the polls being open from twelve PM to nine PM, and therefore resolved that as required by section fifteen dash one zero four dash three B of the state election law. Notice of said village polling place and time of the polls will be open, be, will be open, be given at least sixty days prior to said election date. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and I have a motion. Someone? Okay. And a second? Roll call.
Trustee Petrus. Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett. Hi, it has Mayor Martin.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Oh.
One decision.
Mayor Petrus.
Uh, I can't find, I can't find Trustee Malinsky.
Oh.
Oh.
That's my bad, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's fine, it's good.
Yeah.
Oh, God. Okay. Okay. Motion carries. Uh, Matt, uh, Matt was already here, um. Tom and Kim. Is it appropriate to read, uh, number three, because I heard that there might be a question on that?
Uh, I called the office, um, and spoke with someone in the office, John and Heather are on vacation, they were gonna try and reach them. It was Tom's understanding that the way it is written is correct and accurate.
Okay.
I just, for my own comfort, wanted to call and just double check, but I don't know if he didn't reach them, they haven't called back, so.
I could wait a month.
Cause she was supposed to be, she was hoping to be back this week, because we have a news meeting on Thursday, and she was hoping to have a, have her COVID test and results back before then, so.
I don't wanna make any mistakes, and I don't want to push anything that might not be. I, so I, I think, let's wait.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
All right, we're going to table that now.
Okay.
Yep.
I feel more comfortable.
Okay.
I, yeah.
Um, the, uh, the volleyball net purchase has not been, um, approved. Oh. Um, so we're going to do that.
Okay.
Right now. Um, the cost of that volleyball net, uh, purchased is. Nine hundred and thirty, nine hundred dollars and thirty-five cents. So I need a motion to approve that purchase. Full work. And a second? All right, any discussion, any others that need to be covered, I don't have a answer.
Yeah.
All right, roll call please.
Trustee Malinsky. Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Petrus.
Aye. I think she might have looked her eyes at me. The generator, we already discussed. Um, I just wanted to have a, a quick announcement that, um, Monita's insurance policy is going to change. It will be a slight increase to us, but it keeps it more in line with the other policies, uh, of the village employees. And I would also add that she opted to not join the union policy due to the expense to the book agency. So she is getting a different policy, that's a, it's got a few changes, a little more expensive, but she opted out of joining the union law due to the expense standard. Um, we have one water sewer adjustment request. She wanted.
It was a hot water tank that moved.
Yeah.
Um, ran for five or six days. I went over and saw it, I went over to get a high water bill. It was alarm, we just changed the hot water tank, it was making, I said, I went down to the pictures over there, they had a gas, hot water, now they got electric, because they're going for a power bill. It's from a hot water tank, when I did the report, it was two, like, two hundred gallons an hour for, like, six days.
And they didn't notice that?
They noticed it didn't have much hot water, then when they went in the basement, the whole basement was flooded, of course, it's dirt floor, so it all, it didn't go in except for sewers, so.
So it would be always better credit of, uh, one hundred and five dollars and sixty cents.
Make a motion to approve it.
What's that?
Any other discussion, first? All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Always motion carries. Um, we have nothing for old business, does anyone have anything for old business? All right. Any other questions?
Switcher?
Thank you.
Oh, no. Eight o'clock.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Carries, thank you everyone.